Folks, I've done about 100 town halls in the San Fernando Valley. About half of them have been in this style, a large, open town hall. I want to thank you for being here. For many of you, I see you've been here often. For others, it'll be a new experience. One thing that I do is I try to entice local elected officials to join us. The reason for that is, in town hall after town hall, we get questions and concerns that are really the matters of state or county or city government. So what I've taken to doing is I invite elected officials to come here with the promise that they'll get to speak to you for a minute, and then the victim, I mean guest, promises to be out there in the lobby for a few minutes, so that those of you with a state or a county concern can give them your ideas and suggestions. So first at bat, for one minute, is the Assembly member who has represented the West Valley and the Central Valley, Mid Valley area, for all of, over a year now. And he still has his hair. Bob Blumenfield.
Thank you very much Congressman. Still have my hair, but it's graying faster than I expected. It's been a very tough one year fiscally for the state of California. I'm thrilled, though, to be representing this area from Van Nuys on the east up to North Hills, Northridge, Reseda, Winnetka, Canoga Park, West Hills, Woodland Hills. Thrilled to be doing what I need to do in the state. It's a lot of very difficult choices need to be made. Finances aren't what we would like them to be, and I'm trying to work in a bipartisan fashion to come up with some solutions that will be least harmful to people and will grow our economy, so that we can prosper all together. And I just want to say, though, I am extraordinarily fortunate that my district overlaps with Congressman Sherman's district. He is one of the best that we've got, a shining light in Congress, and I just want you all to know how lucky we all are here in this area to have him representing us, and really in this country to have him representing us. And it's a pleasure to be here at your town hall. Thank you very much. Oh, very good question. Someone asked me, "What is my name?", and I'm going to repeat it, because that's what a good politician does. My name is Bob Blumenfield, blue like the color, Blue Menfield. Bob Blumenfield, representing the 40th Assembly District. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Bob's going to sit here during the presentation of our next guest, and then he'll be back in the lobby to hear from those of you who have concerns about state issues. Our next guest needs no introduction anywhere in the Los Angeles area. He has represented us on the County Board of Supervisors superbly well for longer than he cares for me to acknowledge, Zev Yaroslavski.
Thank you, Brad, and thank you, Bob. First, let me just say, thank you, Brad, for the help you've been this past year during this economic crisis. There've been a number of things that the Congress has done that has helped us here locally, and the county in particular, to keep our health system alive. Just little things in the context of the federal budget, little things, but in the context of our budget, they're very big things and make the difference between keeping facilities open and services available. And I appreciate your help on that. And Bob, even though he's only been in the Assembly for one year, he wouldn't say this, but I'll say this, that all of the objective observers in Sacramento have ranked him as the number-one newcomer to the Assembly and one who has made the most impact, made the most impact in his first year of all of the new Assembly people. And since he only has five more years left in the Assembly, that's one-sixth of his Assembly career, but he's been terrific and a great partner to me. I'm not going to take a lot of time. I just want to give you a 60-second state of the county. A lot of people get the county and the city confused. I get a lot of emails, and I encourage people to email me if you want. I read all of my emails personally. But a lot of people say, "Why doesn't the county do something about its pension system? And do something about the overexpenditures? And do this and do that?" And I know that they're reading the newspapers and they're seeing what's going on in the city. And the city is in a mess, because they have not lived within their means over the last several years. The county has lived within its means, and the county did fix its pension system, actually before I got there. The county, since 1995, when I first started, we almost went bankrupt in 1995. In fact, the day I was sworn in, I was sworn in at 11:00 in the morning, and Orange County went bankrupt at 3:00 that afternoon, and we were next. And our Board of Supervisors made a commitment that we would not allow ourselves to go bankrupt, and we would set ourselves on a course for the future that would not put us in the position that the previous board had put us in. And basically, in plain English, it meant living within our means. That meant in the good years, when we had good revenues, we wouldn't spend it all. We wouldn't undertake new programs that could not be sustained in the bad years. We socked away some money for a rainy day, so that a day like this, a recession like this, and a couple of other recessions we've had since 1995, we'd be able to navigate the minefield and not have to lay people off in the same numbers that other governments are having to do, or furlough people, or that sort of thing. So your county government, while it's stressed, every government is stressed right now because of the economic situation, relative to other local governments, and certainly relative to what's going on in the state and the nation, we are in relatively better shape, because we have been disciplined about what we do. And what does that mean to you? It means that our vital services that the county provides, health, child welfare, welfare, criminal justice, the county jails, and things of that sort, as well as the good stuff that we do, I say "good stuff", the positive things that we do, the arts and culture and things, that we're able to do it without major dislocation. And the services that you may rely on, most of you probably don't rely too much on county services, but if you do, we haven't had to lower the boom on anybody in any major way, because we've been disciplined over the last 15 years. That's a 90-second state of the county. I'll be around and look forward to hearing what you have to say to Brad and to Bob and to myself. Thank you all very much.
We have Carmen Trutanich, our city attorney. And as I explained earlier, I entice elected officials to come here by offering them one minute to speak, and then they need to spend at least five or 10 minutes in the lobby hearing from those who may be interested in what they're doing, or have some ideas, in this case, about city government. So Carmen, why don't I turn it over to you for just a minute, minute and a half? And you'll sit up here until you get tired of it, and then meet folks back in the lobby.
Okay. First off, I want to apologize for being late. I'm dressed casually, because I'm going to see my granddaughter. You know, I am older than I look. So I've only seen her five times since she's been born. She's 10 months old, and she lives an hour away, and I haven't had a chance to go see her, so I'm going to take that time. So I may sneak out of here, but I will stand in the back and answer some questions. I had some things I wanted to say, but I'm going to kind of toss them aside, because last night I had an idea. I read the, I don't know if those of you read the op-ed piece today written by our mayor in the LA Times, but I'm going to talk about that just briefly. But I want to tell you about my first six months on the job. We've inherited a lot of stuff, from Michael Jackson Memorial, medical marijuana billboards, the lawsuit, Laura Chek. And we took some unpopular stands on all those issues, starting out the gate. They called me everything, from Hurricane Carmen, to a bulldog, to a bull in the china shop. But as the time has shown, we've been right on every single issue, because we took the right stand, not the popular stand. And that's going to be the hallmark of my administration. But let's talk about the budget briefly, because I know that concerns all of you. We're in the process now of discussing selling City Hall, selling assets that we have, the crown jewels of Los Angeles. I'm against it. And here comes an idea. And folks, I have not thoroughly vetted this idea, because it came to me Saturday, and when I heard that we were thinking about leasing the convention center. As you know, one of the hallmarks of our mayor's administration has been the greening of Los Angeles, which is a good cause, the greening of Los Angeles. And it potentially could create jobs. Well, there is a job that can be created, and this is my vision. Let's take that convention center, let's change it. Let's change it. I'm going to give you part two first, because you'll understand part two. Part one is going to be the one that's going to be controversial. Part two is to change it. Make it the solar center. Make it the echo center of Los Angeles, a nationwide, first-in-its-kind of a convention center that's totally green. Everything about it is green. Tell me something, you know one company that would not want to have their convention, their trade show, in a place that is totally, totally eco-friendly? That creates jobs. That creates jobs, first and foremost. Now, why that hook? Why that hook? Here's the hook. We're talking about leasing that place out to a private company. Why do that? Create the nexus to the Department of Water and Power by making it solar-friendly, making it their showcase, making it their place, and then selling that asset to ourselves, to Department of Water and Power, using that money to supplement our $4 million budget deficit that we have right now, and giving us time to restructure LA. Because anytime you conduct a fire sale, what happens? Somebody gets screwed, and it's usually you guys. So we need to create that time by selling it to the Department of Water and Power, using their money, which they have a lot of right now. Sell it to them, and use that money. Now, I'll tell you, it's not going to raise your rates, it's not going to change anything, but keep that asset in-house. We also have a way of buying it back. So when our budget is back to being normal, we refinance that place and buy it back and become part of the assets of Los Angeles again. In the process, what happens? We retain ownership of our own asset, one. Two, we create jobs by making it eco-friendly. Okay? Half-minute more to go. And three, what ends up happening is that it becomes a star center for the nation, the first-of-its-kind anywhere in the world. I think it's something that needs to be explored. All the kinks and quirks of this thing are not worked out by any stretch of the imagination, but it's a new way of thinking of how we can get out of this crisis without selling off our assets. Laying off people, all it does is going to exacerbate our budget problems and our problems in the city with unemployment. So we need to think of a new way of doing things. And although it's not my job to come up with those things, it's my job to contribute to the government, and I am doing that. Listen, one thing that I have going for us in this department is that we have turned the city attorney's office around. Morale is high, we're winning lawsuits, we've saved about $80-some-odd million in lawsuits that we've won. We're not done yet. We're not done yet, by far. This is going to be another crown jewel for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you for allowing me to come here and address you. I'm going to be here for a little bit, and then I'm going to go off to the back. When I go off to the back, if those of you who have ideas or think that this idea that I've come up with is terrible, tell me. I want to hear why. Okay? I really do. Because it's important that I get your feedback, so that I can tailor this thing, or toss it out the window if it doesn't work. All right? Thank you very much for hearing me.
I want to thank Bob, and Zev, and Carmen for being here. I want to urge people to fill out these white cards. We're passing them out, I assume? As a matter of fact, I'll ask my staff to come in and pass them down the roads. I need your email address, and this is weird. I need your email address even if I've sent you an email. Because if I don't get it on this card, then I have to go through a huge bureaucratic tangle to be allowed to send you an email, which I will do only some of the time. So if you want to be notified of the next town hall, et cetera, please fill out one of these white cards. Now, I'm going to skip any opening statement regarding Afghanistan, healthcare, Iraq, because I know that I'm going to get questions on those subjects. When I do, I'm going to give a real long answer, and when I seem to be going on too long, remember, I skipped that part of my opening address. I do want to talk instead about some economic issues. First, home price stabilization. We have the new homebuyer's tax credit, $8,000. You have to open escrow by April 30th, close escrow by June 30th. There's also $6,500 credit for those who already own a home, who are buying a different home. This is critically important to us, but even more important is the conforming loan limit. I have been fighting for years to raise the limit on the amount of loans that can be handled by Fannie, Freddie, and FHA, because if those of you who have bought a home know, especially at these times, it's almost impossible to get a "jumbo", and if you do, you're going to be paying a lot more for it. Now, in many parts of the country, you can buy a really nice home for a few hundred thousand dollars. And I have to convince my colleagues that there are homes in the valley with working men and women, where the price may be as high as $729,000. We have been able to do that, at least with regard to this fiscal year, and there's nothing I'm working on harder than to make that $729, $750 permanent, so that you can get qualified and get an interest rate. And that's important whether you're buying a home, selling a home, or just living in a home. Because if your next-door neighbor can't find a buyer for their home, then your home is less valuable. And if the only loans available above $417,000 are going to be these expensive, difficult-to-qualify jumbo loans, there's somebody in your neighborhood who isn't going to be able to sell. So it is so important to the economy here of Southern California. You know, Southern California is similar to most of the rest of America, with one giant difference economically. Our homes cost us two to three times as much. We've got two to three times as much invested in the value of the home. We're two or three times as dependent on the value of that home for our retirement. And so there's nothing more important than stabilizing home prices. We seem to have been able to do that about now. Whether that continues, I think depends on continuing to fight for a higher conforming loan limit. Second, jobs. I know there's a lot of talk about controversial stimulus bills. The federal government has a stimulus bill that is not controversial, because it's in the Constitution. It's called the census. Every 10 years, we do it, and I don't know how our founding fathers realized that in 2010, we'd need some extra jobs here in the San Fernando Valley, but they were brilliant individuals. 3,000 census jobs are available, plus some additional supervisory jobs as well. The rank-and-file jobs pay $17 an hour. The right time to apply is tomorrow. If you didn't get one of these, or you've lost it, we've got extra copies. All the details about census jobs are there. If you don't need a job, you probably know somebody who does, and even if you don't even like that person, please help them get a job, because we need to get the economy of the San Fernando Valley growing. We also, we need people who know the valley, who live in the valley, who will make sure we count the valley accurately, so that the valley gets its fair share of state and local resources. Now, there are two bills that sometimes get confused in the public mind, and I did something very confusing to my constituents. I voted for one and against the other. I voted for the stimulus bill. I realize that's controversial to some. It's a little less controversial when you realize what's in it. Well over a third of the bill is tax cuts for working families. The next big parts of the bill are the funds that state and local government need to keep cops and teachers on the job. I voted against the Wall Street bailout bill. In fact, I led, as many of you know, I led the effort on the Democratic side against that bill. We beat it once, we were not able to beat it the second time, but here's what you don't know. Secretary Geithner, about six months ago, came up with his reform package, and hidden in it on page 623, was a provision for executive branch, permanent, unlimited bailout authority. For the executive branch, it would have to be the Secretary of the Treasury working with the Chairman of the Fed. So you'd have two executive branch officers who together could do unlimited bailouts forever. I spent, I spent most of the last six months exposing and attacking that provision. We passed a House bill that provides for extreme limits and a sunset on any bailout, and furthermore provided that the big banks are going to have to pay into a fund, not only to compensate us for any future bailouts, but to pay us back for what we lost on the past bailout. But I'm not interested in not losing money on bailouts. I'm interested in not having future bailouts. The way to deal with too big to fail is that's too big to exist. Never again should we have an AIG or a Lehman Brothers able to turn to us and say, "If you don't bail us out, we're going to sink, and we're going to take you with us." Private companies should be able to sink without taking us with them. And if they're big enough to make that argument, they're too big. And the bill we passed, that I co-sponsored in the House, has a provision that at least allows, I wish it mandated, we at least got, allows the executive branch to force these companies to be smaller, because we should never have too big to fail. Capitalism is the right to succeed and the right to fail, and that's a private matter, not a reason for bailouts. I co-sponsored the Credit Card Holder Bill of Rights. I was invited to the White House to see it signed. It goes into effect tomorrow. They have to mail you your statement 21 days before it's due. The due date includes the afternoon, not just the morning. They can't hit you with over-the-limit fees if you don't want to go over the limit. And when you make a payment, they apply it first to the balance, or the portion of the balance that has the highest interest rate, not the one with the lowest interest rate. No double-cycle billing, and no free credit cards to people under 21 unless those people, unless they have a source of income to repay. We also need, we passed through the House, pending in the Senate, a lot of good things are pending in the Senate, a couple of bad things are pending in the Senate, a financial services consumer protection agency to deal with the whole raft of issues. I am working on a bill that would, I asked President Obama about it in a little public forum that we did. I asked him what he would think of ending MFN for China. He said that that would be disruptive, so he was against it. I thought, disrupt a trade relationship in which we have an enormous trade deficit year after, I may want to be disruptive of this particular trade relationship. So I believe we have the tickets there. We're going to ask somebody over here to pull a ticket, and whoever are the next 10 numbers on that ticket are the folks who can ask a question if you want to. And if you have one of those winning tickets, please line up here if you feel like asking a question. We'll go, you know, as long as it takes to answer those questions, and then we'll pick another number. So even if you didn't win the lottery this time, there's another drawing, hopefully in 20 minutes. The number we have is 801-551, so starting with 801-552 and going 10. If you have one of those winning tickets, please stand up if you want to ask a question. Your question should be one minute. It should be a question. It should be, I would ask you for an easy question. If your question is difficult, I'll be scurrying around, looking at my notes, instead of politely looking at you as you ask your question. It's not my fault, I'm not rude, you're asking a tough question. When you ask a question, please tell me your name and what town you live in. One other thing, this is a San Fernando Valley town hall. If you don't live in the valley, fine, you're welcome to be here, no charge, have some food, but please don't ask a question. If you live in the valley, please tell me the town you live in.
My name is Robert Balanzuela. I'm with Northridge, California.
Hi, Robert.
Hi. My question is, can move this up a little bit? My question is, the politicians, as I understand, as I feel, I do not feel they are representing the constituents like we expect them to. There are different amendments, there are different amendments in the Constitution that seem to always be and start to get diluted more and more. I noticed that one of your questions was, "Do you believe in, do you support the NRA?" The NRA is supporting the Second Amendment. I do not hear enough said about the amendments of the Constitution.
I thank you for your question. Obviously, all of us have got to endeavor to represent our constituents. If we don't, you can throw us out. And hopefully, that isn't the biggest applause line of the day. In any case, those of us in the House of Representatives, you get that chance every two years. As for my questions about the NRA, there are some people who agree with the NRA, some people who believe very much in the Constitution, including the Second Amendment, but who see things differently. And that's why I ask people whether they think the Brady campaign to control gun violence or the NRA is the organization that most reflects their views, because both groups want to come talk to me, and the first thing they do is they say, "We represent the valley. People in your district agree with us." Every group says that. And so I like to test it and see which groups actually do say things that have support here in the San Fernando Valley.
Congressman, first, I'd like to thank you very much as to what you are doing with regards to homes, and helping us with regards to loans, et cetera. As you know, I'm a mortgage broker. I have a lot of people that come to me that are losing their homes. And loan modifications are extremely difficult, and unfortunately, on loan modifications, they have a high percentage of failure after the loan modification is done. One of the biggest problems in loan modifications, I believe right now, is the fact that these homeowners have to deal with one department that is telling them that they owe their loan, and it's a collection department, another department that has their loan modification is going to talk to them, another department that is foreclosing on their home, and none of these three departments within that bank talk to one another on that one property to solve the solution. Instead, that poor homeowner is being foreclosed on at the same time that they have a loan modification that they're working on. What can be done to make the banks work, and there's a lot that's being done, but if there's anything new, to make the banks work as one property, everybody communicates so we can get to one solution for that homeowner?
There are a lot of people who have gotten the runaround from banks. There are a few circumstances where the bank might be reasonable in not modifying the loan. There are some circumstances where, no matter what modification was made, the person couldn't afford to live in the home under any circumstances. There are some circumstances where people misstated their income on their application. But there are many, many times when it is in the bank's interest and the community's interest that the loan be modified. We are putting a lot of pressure on the banks to be reasonable and efficient. We're putting that pressure on them from Washington. We're also pushing them from the other end. Standing next to you is Carolina, who, along with our constituent service staff, can at least make sure that the bank talks to you and has somebody who understands something talk to you. Now, they didn't make me the dictator, so I can't call Wells Fargo and tell them, "Cut so-and-so's mortgage payment by $400." But we can at least make sure that you're not getting a busy signal, or a phone tree, or a recording. So please, they're only working 60, 70 hours a week, so please call my constituent service staff if the problem that you're having is you're not even getting through to somebody to view your situation.
This question is about job creation. We hear a lot of things that are being done in Washington to create jobs. But there is corporations, or any municipalities, and any place, everybody's trying to cut Taxpayers don't want to pay any more tax, so it's hard to create government jobs. Taxpayers don't want to pay any more tax, so it's hard to create government jobs. So the question that I have is, first, how can you create jobs? And second, why can't we do something like, nobody is allowed to work more than 40 hours if you don't pay overtime, and that should create enough jobs to employ the 10% or so of people who are unemployed? And people who are working won't have to work 50, 60, 80 hours a week to keep their jobs.
Okay. Let me address that. First, this is a capitalist society. Most of the jobs are going to be created independent of what government does. The, the second thing is that the most important thing that can be done is to help the private sector get capital, and that starts by lowering interest rates. But we've already lowered interest rates on the extremely credit-worthy borrowers down to almost nothing, which is why if you go put your money in a savings account, they pay you so little interest it's hard to calculate. So we have low interest rates. As to your proposal that overtime be paid, the majority of jobs in America, that is the rule. And in this state, it's an eight-hour day and a 40-hour week, and if you work over that, you get time and a half. There are supervisory jobs and certain sales commission jobs to which that doesn't apply. I hadn't thought of the idea of reducing the number of jobs that are exempt from paying overtime as a way to provide more employment, and I'm not going to shoot from the hip on that, I'm going to talk to some economists about it, see if they think it would be helpful in spreading the existing work around more employees. Let's go on to the next question.
My name is Anthony Motano, I'm from Sherman Oaks, California. My wife works for Los Angeles Unified School District. They're getting pay cuts and they're getting layoffs. What are you and the other congressional members of Congress and the state, and the United States Senate doing to reduce your staff's payroll and reduce your staff? Thank you.
I am not at all sure that I pay Carolina enough so that cutting her wages would have a significant economic impact. I will say that I supported, and not everybody agrees with this, the stimulus bill, and a very big chunk, well, a significant number of the teachers at LAUSD are being paid only because that stimulus bill was signed. I was out visiting East Valley High School, and they said, look, we've got 40 teachers, we were about to lay off 10. We got the stimulus money and we only laid off one, and luckily that was one person who was going to move on anyway. So it's not only important for our economy that we have teachers who are employed, who can then be at the movies, can then be at restaurants, can be spending money and keeping our whole economy going. It is important to our kids that they didn't have to increase class size here at Reseda High School, or at East Valley High, or at any of the schools at LAUSD to anywhere near the extent they would have if we had not provided the stimulus money. On to the next question.
My name is Jerry Spencer, and I'm from Burbank, California. I'm a retired high school teacher, although my question doesn't involve education. From what I have seen, health care has become one of the biggest political footballs I have ever seen. So I would like to offer something that I think is very bipartisan in the way the government can help us with our health care. Right now, out-of-pocket health care expenses are not tax deductible until you have exceeded 7.5% of your adjusted gross income. For the average person with $50,000 a year, that's about $3,800 worth of health care out of your pocket before you ever can write anything off. And I'm proposing that why can't we write off our health care, just like we do at charity? You go, $10, $20 for a copay, you write it off. $10 for a medical, for a medicine copay, write it off. Anything that we pay that comes out of our pocket that is medically approved, we should be able to write off, much like we do at charity, instead of waiting for 7.5%. Because the average person, younger person especially, could never meet that.
Let me address that. First, three, this relates to Schedule A of your tax return where people itemize their deductions. Three-quarters of Americans don't itemize their deductions, so whether we gave, whether we made the change you suggest or not, they still wouldn't get any itemized deductions. They don't get anything for charity, they don't get anything for taxes, they just get one standard amount. Now, as for the one quarter that do itemize their deductions, the thinking is, for charity, we want to incentivize charity. There are some people who might not donate anything if they didn't get a write-off, so from the very first dollar that they, that they contribute, they get a write-off. As for health care, it's certainly not an incentive. We're not trying to encourage people to go, through the tax system, to go see the doctor. There are plenty of good reasons to see the doctor when you need to. So the purpose of the write-off for health care is to give something back to those who face truly extraordinary health costs, not to, you know, we all pay for food and we don't allow a deduction for that because we figure that's ordinary life. Back in my day, I'm an old CPA, it used to be at 5%. I think that might make more sense, because I think if you're spending more than 5%, you are in a truly extraordinary category. It is, it is hitting your personal budget in a way you had no way to expect. But if you have an amount you got to spend on food, or a very low amount that you need to spend on medical care, it's hard to say that that should be a write-off for the one quarter of people who get to itemize their deductions. I realize you may, you may disagree on this, but food fits in this category as well, or is a similar analogy.
I just want to make one quick point. I can understand the point of, that point of view during normal times, but right now, health care is a major, major issue and an expense to most Americans. And at this day and age, I think being able to write off all our medical expenses is one way the government can help. The government's talking every day in Congress about health care, health care, health care. Well, this is one bipartisan thing that the government can do for us.
It'd be expensive, I do understand, I do understand, understand your position. On to the next question.
Hello, thank you. My name is Jim Heifel, Weneka, California. I'm going to talk to you about something that may, I'll make this brief, but it may seem like an old issue. Two years ago, me and some other citizens worked on impeachment of George Bush and Dick Cheney for the numerous, thank you, the numerous crimes they committed in office. I'm not even going to try to enumerate them. But we went out and we generated cards to send to your office in Washington. We generated 500 cards, we had a meeting with Matt about it, Sarah and I. Anyway, it may be too late to impeach for all practical purposes. It's not too late to hold them accountable for their crimes. Thank you. Thank you. Furthermore, Dick Cheney has recently admitted to signing off on torture. He's basically confessed to a war crime. Waterboarding is torture. We prosecuted the Japanese for it. Thank you. Okay. Congressman Conyers, your colleague, has called for investigations into the crimes committed during the Bush administration. I'm getting to the question, I'm within one minute, I'm within one minute, I'm within one minute, okay. It's called for investigations into the crimes committed during the Bush administration. Do you support investiga, excuse me, excuse me, you're only making it take more time. Do you, my question is, my question is, my question is, Congressman, do you support investigation of the crimes committed during the Bush administration, even if it led to Bush and Cheney, and if it, if it led that far, would you support prosecution? That's my question.
Two separate questions. I'm going to give you a constitutional answer here. Our Constitution prohibits bills of attainder. So members of Congress are not allowed to make a decision on who gets prosecuted for a crime. Now, Carmen gets to do that, I don't. So I do not think that the House of Representatives and Senate can prosecute somebody for a crime. The Constitution is very clear on the other side. As to whether we should investigate, yes, we've got to investigate. Next question.
Yes, Eugene Hernandez-Somar. In four years, the United States was able to defeat the Axis powers. We're now in the ninth year of fighting the Afghan war with no discernible objectives. We're defending a warlord that is the largest opium producer in the, in the world, and yet our schools are falling apart, our teachers are being laid off. How can we sustain, and why do you continue to vote for extensions of this war and the occupation of Iraq when our priorities should be right here?
Is your question on Iraq or Afghanistan? Both. Both. We are in the process of pulling out of Iraq, we're also in the possible process of putting more troops in Afghanistan. Now, as to the amount of time it takes, I don't think that those who are terrorists and bent on killing Americans are going to go away in three or four years. This is a different kind of conflict than World War II. It requires patience and common sense. At the same time, I have not supported the idea of putting more troops in Afghanistan because I think that our mission in Afghanistan should be limited and not to the point of trying to give Karzai power over every valley in Afghanistan. I mean, if we could do that easily, fine, but it isn't easy, and it isn't necessarily one of our top, top national security priorities. So if your question is, do I think we should just end the effort in Afghanistan, I would say, we weren't involved in Afghanistan in the 90s and that gave Bin Laden a place to build. On the other hand, do we need to have so many troops in Afghanistan that we can carry on a program to allow Karzai to control the whole country and every part of it? I don't think we need to do that either. Yes.
Hello, Congressman. My name is Oliver Jehizy. I am a newly-admitted attorney at law.
Let's, let's pick another ticket. Why don't you pick a ticket, sir? Read it out to us. 801-661, so if you have any, within 10 of that, that number plus 10, why don't you stand up? Go, go ahead.
Oh, I can? I thought because I was an attorney I had to pick another card. First of all, you know, I'm from Woodland Hills, and I'm, I'm, all right, I'm originally from London, and just having a gentleman up here ask a question and having the discourteous response really kind of, it really scares me, because in this day and age, the community has to come together. And one of the things that I want to address to your attention is, you discussed if we don't like you, we can just vote you out of office. Now, I watch the NBA and the NFL, and I see exceptional individuals. When is the exceptionalism going to come into politics? Because when we vote for somebody else, we pretty much get the same thing. Now, I don't know if I'm the only individual that should be terrified that someone like Sarah Palin can get as far as she did in this political process. And, and, and just, and just, and just to, and just to comment on the individual who discussed about the war crime thing, I understand that's an issue, but accountability, accountability, hold on, accountability is important, accountability, accountability, respect and humanity is important. So I want to know, in light of the irresponsible decision passed by the Supreme Court, which now allows private companies to put their CEOs in the place of President of the United States, what's being done to counteract that?
Okay. Let me address all that. I'm going to ask other people to keep their questions to one minute. First, as to whether you can do better as a Congressman, I want to make it clear, I'm not Kobe Bryant, but I'm not Sarah Palin either. So if Kobe runs, vote for him. As to this recent Supreme Court decision, it is a travesty. It, and it is not a coincidence that at a time when the moneyed establishment was never under more attack from populism, the Supreme Court, the defenders of the elite in this society, decided to make sure that that elite had unlimited weapons to fight back to all those people they think of as peasants with pitchforks and torches. As to what Congress can do, that opinion is carefully written with the idea of trying to prevent Congress from doing anything. The other problem is that what the, what the decision basically does is it reverses The natural ally to do something on that would be John McCain. McCain has walked away from his own provision. It will be very hard to find any Republican in the Senate who wants to even trim that law, decision a little bit. The part of it that we're going to be most successful at going after, and even then I can't be sure, is what can be done by a corporate entity that is controlled from abroad? Because we, I do not think that, you know, the United States government isn't in a position, certainly not legally, to start spending money trying to elect this or that person in Britain, or in China, or Japan, and yet, under that Supreme Court decision, China can form the U.S.-China Trading Corporation of the United States, file papers with the California Secretary of State, bring in a billion dollars' worth of toys, and when that billion dollars, when they get the billion dollars for the toys, that's a billion dollars they can spend trying to influence. I don't think that the Chinese government should be allowed to influence elections in the United States. So I will support efforts to trim back that Supreme Court opinion, particularly with regard to foreign corporations. Yes. If you're within 10 of that, the next 10 up from that, come on down and ask a question. What's your question, sir? What's your name?
Congressman, my name is David Bereznik, I'm from Granada Hills. I'm a certified residential real estate appraiser, founding member of the California Coalition for Appraisal Professionals, and a board member of the Granada Hills South Neighborhood Council. When last we met, it was a lunch, a chamber luncheon, we asked you to take a look at House Resolution 3044, which you did and signed on as a cosponsor, which Coalition thanks you. It's a piece of legislation that needs to be taken a look at. It's, right now, it's sitting in committee with 123 cosponsors, and we'd like to know what it takes to get it to the floor and get it acted on.
To be sure, it takes 218 cosponsors, although the number of cosponsors this bill has is already much higher than many bills that get acted on, and I'm going to go back to Congress and give this one a push, I'll talk to the relevant committee chairman. That's all I can do.
Again, we thank you for your support.
My name is Jack Lester, North Hills. I want to make a little preface before I ask you the question. I'm a small businessman, less than 10 employees. I understand that the job bill, they're going to give me a tax credit if I were to hire somebody, but I can't hire somebody if there's no demand. If I don't have the demand for my business, then I can't hire somebody. The other thing is, I hear all this talk about what you're going to do for the teachers, the policemen, the firemen. What are you going to do for the nuts and bolts businessman who's out there trying to make a living, trying to provide livings for other people? Other people depend on me for their living.
What do you sell?
What are you going to do? I hear what you're going to do for the unions, but nothing for me.
David, what business are you in?
I'm in the refrigeration business.
Stimulating demand is what the stimulus bill was supposed to do, it has done it to some degree. Had we not passed that stimulus bill, your situation might even be worse, although I'm sure it's not very good now. What we can do to stimulate demand? First, the lowest possible short-term interest rates, that's what Bernanke has done. Second, try to keep people on the payroll so that not only do you, our kids benefit by having teachers, if your business sold something to teachers, and I don't know what kind of refrigeration you do. refrigeration you do, so I don't know whether an individual teacher would be a customer, but a teacher might be a customer of a customer if you sell the restaurants.
I do commercial refrigeration.
What?
Commercial.
So more restaurants?
Businesses, yeah. Mostly healthcare.
Gotcha. The, I mean, that's fairly specialized, so I'll talk more broadly. To the extent that we keep teachers and cops on the payroll, they're not only providing service, they're also part of that demand. Finally, the stimulus bill provided about $300 billion of tax cuts. Now, that's spread out over an entire country. Whether any of that means that people can afford to be at a restaurant where they might have some kind of refrigeration, whether that means more people are employed, have a Blue Cross card and can actually go into the hospital. For the private sector economy to work, it's not like a communist system where you issue somebody a voucher and, you know, you have a national plan, we're going to create so many cans of Spam and each person gets a Spam voucher. You can't trace everything. All you can do is create demand and whether the people with tax cuts or the people who are teachers and cops who remained employed are buying things from your customers or spending their money on something else, it's hard for me to determine. But demand in general in the economy was stimulated. Whether the amount of stimulus we got was the right amount and whether it cost the right amount is something I'll probably get another question.
I just know that if you're taking money from me, I've got less to spend in my pocket and that seems to be the outlook of the President Administration.
David, if I could just add something to, meant to mention it in my opening remarks. The county has a program that is utilizing, where it is providing funds for employers who will hire unemployed individuals up to $10, well, at $10 an hour. We will pay the $10 an hour for 40 hours a week for up to a year. Contact my office, email me, go to my website, zev.lacounty.gov, zev.lacounty.gov. Email me and I'll get you all the information. It's too complicated to do here. But that is a program that we have targeted a goal of hiring 10,000 people in the county. We're almost there. We had a seminar on it here in the San Fernando Valley just a few days ago. And if you, it's a good program for businesses, it's a good program for the unemployed because it gives them a job and it gives them the ability to hone their skills in a particular area. So if you're, I understand that, I understand that, but there's some, if your business doesn't have the demand that warrants that, then I understand, but there are some businesses who have the demand, but people aren't paying on time, the revenues aren't in, they can't pay for the employee force that they need. If you're interested in it, I just put it out on the table, we have that program.
Yes, to add some more detail to the last question, if we can keep police officers, teachers, et cetera, hired, if more people go to the census, whatever, when people get sick, they go to the hospital, they'll have coverage, they'll actually pay the hospital as opposed to the people without coverage don't pay the hospital, maybe that's a hospital that can afford to improve its refrigeration system. That's, and that just shows how many steps there are to a company that is not dealing with ordinary consumers. Next question.
Hi, my name is Vicki Smith. I'm a real estate broker. I've been in real estate, hate to say it, over 40 years and I am broke. My business has no place to go to get help. I am 60 years old and I can't get any medical insurance. My insurance was increased 46% in the last two years. So, they canceled on me because I couldn't make the payment anymore of $769 a month. Who knows what Kaiser is charging this year? But you brought up one thing that's in my alley and that's this homebuyer tax credit, which I think is great on paper, but when you in the DC pass these laws, you never follow up to see how they're being enforced or if they're being enforced or how do they apply? In my case, I represent traditional buyers, not investors, not people from out of the country with all cash. So when I make an offer, I spend an entire year making offers and getting turned down, sometimes never getting a response that they even got my offer for my buyer. My buyers stick with me for eight to 12 months and then they just say, I'm frustrated, I'm out of here. So how are we supposed to get somebody in escrow by April 30th? That's my issue is right, right now, what's being accepted is more than 50% of investor offers. They buy in bulk, they buy at very low prices, they make a bargain, and then my buyers lose out because those are the, those are the offers sent to the lenders, not anything else, not my buyer's offer. It's shoved on the listing agent's bottom of the pile. And there's so many things I want to talk with Carolina about, so many subjects.
Talk to Carolina about those subjects. I don't know about the individual transactions that you talk about.
Yes, I know, but to brag about it is kind of silly because they're not getting accepted.
We may have a problem with your practice. There are, there are lots of listing agents who want to sell to real homeowner buyers.
Not REO agents, not short-sell agents.
There are, there are properties for sale that are not REO and it's important that those also sell for a good price. Yes?
Thank you for being here, Congressman Sherman. My name is Jeff Pullen and I'm from Tarzana. And it may be a little less important, but I heard, since there is no cost of living adjustment for Social Security this year, I heard about a $250 one-time bonus for 2010. What happened?
That's what happened. And I will say that members of Congress got an absolute zero and we didn't get the $250. But on the other hand, we are reasonably well-paid, some would say overpaid right now.
Hi, Zev, Congressman Sherman. My question is regarding work comp. 16 years ago, I was hurt on the job and it went smoothly and they accepted the responsibility. Last year, a year and a half ago, I was hurt on the job. I didn't know it till 60 days later and then I called the employer and I said, you know, this pain isn't going away. Well, we're not responsible, you didn't complain here when you were working. The way it's set up with Governor Schwarzenegger, I've been told by the lawyer who took, this is my case on a lien, is that he has pretty much sided with the insurance companies and the employers. And so, an injury I had 16 years ago, I was well in a year. It's been a year and a half and I still have had no action. Anything you take to a vendor on a lien is not going to be done. So, my problem is you guys letting these work comp companies go, you know, without investigating the claim and letting these, these good people, I think like myself, there are many of them, who were hurt at work and you guys don't follow through and make sure that, you know, the employer just can't deny, you know, if I haven't done anything else but what I've done for 30 years, how can you say it's not related when it's all physically related? So, I'm upset with the process. The process sucks. I don't want to be sick. I don't think anybody wants to be sick. You know, I'm sorry for the people who are scared to be sick, like the woman who is here, 60 years old with no insurance. This is an abomination. I think the whole world sees the US as having a crappy healthcare system. What are you going to do about it?
I mean, the what you're going to do, but I'll address both of the questions. You said healthcare and workers' comp.
What are you going to do about turning your back on the work comp?
Well, on workers' comp, as you alluded to, is a decision made in Sacramento. It is difficult to put together a good system, but I think you illustrate that they may have put together a bad system. There, I hear this from both sides. I hear from employers who describe circumstances where it seems that there was an award that was unfair and unfairly beneficial to the employee, and I hear cases like yours. I'm not a workers' comp judge. I do think that Sacramento has got to design the process so that situations like yours are treated justly.
Where does that start?
Well, it's, Bob left here earlier. This is a state issue. He did do his 10 minutes, I'm told by my staff, he did do his 10 minutes in the lobby. I wish I could tell you, I'll go back to Congress and fix this, but this is a state issue, as you point out.
Okay, what was his name? Bob Cameron? Is that his name?
Bob Lumenfeld.
Oh, Bloomenfeld. Okay, he was helpful. I did use him for bureaucracy. Okay, thank you.
Is he still in the lobby? If he's still in the lobby, go get him. But I work in Washington, Schwarzenegger's in Sacramento. If Schwarzenegger's the problem, Bob's the solution.
We're in trouble. My name is Judy Kapler and I live in Tarzana and I have watched the healthcare issue get battered around ridiculously and I have no confidence that Washington is going to do anything about it. And so, I address to you the issue of California care and a single payer program for the state of California and I would like to know where you stand on that because clearly we have no say in Washington, but maybe we can have some say in California.
First, let me address, because I promised, I'm surprised I didn't get a question that facilitated this answer already, but let me address what's happening in Washington.
Nothing.
First of all, I think we need national, comprehensive healthcare that includes everyone. Doing this at a federal level has an advantage in that you can't then have California employers complaining that, oh my God, we're going to face competition from other states. And you want to take care of the entire country. Now, what happened is I think we Democrats sold it the wrong way. Now first, realize that two things have got to go together. Universal coverage and mandated coverage and no pre-existing condition automatic approval. The reason those have to go together is if you turn to the insurance companies and say, you must take everybody at a standard rate, but you don't make people get insurance, there are people who just won't buy the insurance until they get the diagnosis. So if you're going to tell an insurance company that that one person in 100,000 who gets the most severe cancer is going to get a million dollars of health coverage and they're going to need it, you've got to be able to say, that's because you're collecting premiums on all the people. Now, the way, the reason we made this mistake is that our rhetoric focused on those people who don't have insurance. It was, oh, there are 40 million people without insurance, those are the people we're trying to help, here's this plan, it provides insurance, please vote for it. 85% of the people in the country who vote have insurance and when they take polls, they only poll people who vote. So, the reports came back to Congress, the people without insurance don't vote, the people with insurance don't think we're trying to help them. That's not because we weren't, it's because we misphrased what we were trying to do. A lot of people in this room have a Blue Cross card. Your Blue Cross, and you may think, well, so don't do anything in Washington, I like my Blue Cross card, until you think your Blue Cross card is shrinking every day. Now, maybe this means your employer is making you pay another 100 a month toward the cost. Maybe this means a higher copayment when you visit the doctor. Maybe this means a higher deductible. Maybe this means that there's now a maximum, so after you get $250,000 worth of care, they cut you off. That sounds fine, you don't have cancer. But what about next month if you get diagnosed? That $250,000 limit, that's a death panel, not a government death panel, private insurance company death panel. They take you up to a certain point, then they cut you off. Then, there are people with private insurance, just get that 40% increase. So, people who say, I like what I have, so don't change the system, must realize, what I have is shrinking and if they don't change the system, it's going to keep shrinking. And so, we have to go to people who have coverage they like and explain that if we don't take action, it's going to keep shriveling. And even if you have great coverage, it's your employer. There's another outfit in your industry that's cutting back on coverage and saving money and going to undercut your boss in the next bid. And so, it's only another six months before even at your company, they're going to start shrinking that Blue Cross card. The cycle is downward and it accelerates. The more people who don't have coverage, the more people show up in emergency rooms, get treatment and don't pay. That means the hospital has to raise the fee on the people who do have coverage. That means a higher insurance premium. Sometimes a higher insurance premium is there because the cost is higher, sometimes it's there because the insurance company's greedier. They can both happen. Either kind of increase in healthcare coverage costs means your employer is thinking about shrinking your policy. And it accelerates. Anybody in the valley loses coverage, that's more of a burden on our local hospitals, that's higher costs that they impose, that's a higher cost to your company, that's somebody, maybe not you, somebody's employer is then going to cut them off and continue this cycle downward. The only way to deal with it is universal coverage. And that's why I voted for this bill after I read it. Yes, next question.
Wait, I want, you didn't answer my question.
Okay, as to the state system?
Please, please.
I have not studied.
Single payer was not even allowed a seat at the table from day one. Now, let's get straight about that. I don't know why, maybe you do. And we don't need to debate that now. But if California puts on the ballot, which we're working on, a single payer system for the state of California, universal healthcare like they have in Massachusetts, and I don't care who they elected Senator, is that a possibility for us here?
The answer is, people made a big point with me on healthcare. Don't vote on it till you've read it. I haven't read it, I like the outlines that I've seen of it, put me down as for it, leaning for it until I read it. And get it on the ballot because I want to have a chance to vote on it. I won't vote on it till I read it and I'll take a public position before I vote on it. I haven't read them all, but I did read the one I voted for. Yeah.
Okay, my name is Raquel Trinidad. I live in Mission Hills, California. I'll get very direct with my question. I wanted to know specifically what you're doing to end the use of torture and how you're going to, you know, specifically what kind of strategy you have to close Guantanamo.
I basically supported President Obama in saying America does not torture and that we should close Guantanamo. The fact is that the United States can keep people in prison, the worst of the worst. The fact is, as far as breaking out of prison and being a danger, the gangbangers are a much bigger danger. They know how to operate on our streets. The guys at Guantanamo, for the most part, don't speak English. They'd be the first, they're not going to break out of a maximum security prison. And there has to be a balance, but you have to understand the balance. Yes, torture may do this or that in the short term, but cooperation with other countries is even more important to beating the war on terror. And I chair the Subcommittee on Terrorism and Nonproliferation. Best example, the Christmas bomber. You can say, we might have done this or that with torture. We did not torture him. We've got his family flying over here convincing him to tell us things, that is the most effective means of getting information out of that individual. Moreover, we've got the cooperation of the Nigerian government. I'm not sure we'd have that if we were torturing somebody. So, there is no one more interested in winning the war on terrorism than I am. Torture in Guantanamo aren't the way to do it. Let's have the next gentleman pick a ticket. We'll take another 10. We have, we're now in overtime, folks. And Zev, thank you. Oh, Zev's going to be in the back lobby. Let's give him a round of applause for staying here the whole time.
All right, so the next number is 801-538. So if you have between 538 and 548, please come on up.
Let me at this point just put Let me, at this point, just put in another pitch for filling out those white cards, giving us your email address, and letting us keep in touch with you. We're especially heading into periods of time, we've got two three-month blackout periods where I'm not allowed to send out any emails unless you put your email right on this card. Don't ask me why. Those are the rules. Okay, if you want a white card, just raise your hand. The staff will come here and give you one. No, we don't do that. Go ahead.
Mike Radosh, Woodland Hills. I was going to ask about reconciliation, but you used a phrase a short while ago, which I would like clarification on. You said, "It's essential that we have mandated coverage." If I'm not mistaken, what that means is everyone in here is going to buy health insurance, or the federal government's going to put them in prison. Is that correct?
No, the president, there are economic, okay, first of all, let me do explain reconciliation, and then, as to your question, no, there's no jail time for not buying coverage. There is an economic, there's an economic subsidy for those who can't afford it, and a economic disincentive for those who choose not to buy it. As to reconciliation, because I do want to explain the most bizarre institution in America, the United States Senate. Right now, we have a Senate that has invented new math. Fifty-nine is greater than, 41 is greater than 59. This is a bizarre system of math, but right before that happened, they did pass a Senate bill. A Senate bill, a health bill that's pending before the House and has some really big problems with it, not the least of which is the Cornhusker Kickback and Louisiana Purchase, et cetera. So, what may happen is we might pass a, quote, "The only kind of bill that they can't filibuster" in the Senate is a reconciliation bill. A reconciliation bill has to deal exclusively with budget issues, not things like, say, abortion or something like that. A budget issue, and it has to be consistent with the budget resolution. We could pass a reconciliation bill, send it to the Senate, they hopefully will amend it only slightly, and send it back to us with all the provisions necessary to fix the Senate health care bill. We could then, on one day, pass the Senate health care bill and fix it. I don't think we're going to vote for the Senate health care bill without having the fixes guaranteed to us in that way. So, obviously, the approach the country would prefer is if both parties got together at the White House this coming week and worked on something that really met the needs of all Americans. The one other thing I want to point out is, is constant Republican refrain, "Things would be wonderful if only we had tort reform." You know what their tort reform program is? Their anti-law suit against doctor program is? It's the micro law that was already passed in California decade and more ago. So, if the Republicans are going to tell you that tort reform is going to solve the problem, you're living in Nirvana if it solves the problem. We've had it. It is exactly what the Republicans want to impose nationwide. So, tort reform at the federal level will do nothing more than reinstitute California's approach. It's not going to do anything for California. I think the House bill would, and I think you could fix the Senate bill so that it would as well. Next question.
My name is Joe McColey. I live in Northridge, California, and my question has to do with, why do people that draw Social Security have to pay income tax on that amount, full amount, when during your lifetime, you're working, you are paying taxes on that amount? Because I also get a pension from another company, and my taxable portion is the part that the company contributes. My portion that I contributed is tax-exempt. Why do I have to pay, and the only other benefit I see is when I hit 65, is I get two big exemptions and that stuff there. But the thing is, is that in, you're paying a tax on something that you got taxed already. Now, and it's something that's gone on and on, and no one has ever addressed that issue.
Well, that was passed long before I got to Washington. I agree that it is a problem. I would point out that it applies only to seniors with above-average incomes, but half the people have above-average incomes. And it may be even a little higher than that. It is 85%, not 100%, which means it's only 85% as bad, as you say, which is still pretty bad. The answer is, we have not had a proposal on the floor that would fix that. If we did, it would be expensive, but I think it'd be worthwhile.
But if you're getting $20,000, 85% is $15,000, and you're at a fixed-income level, and the only way you can get around paying the taxes, you could get nailed by the IRS for not paying income taxes on a timely basis. So, you have to pay quarterly tax payments so that you don't get assessed at the end of the year a penalty payment.
I understand that-
I'm not a CPA. I'm just, I read the, I do my own taxes.
I understand exactly what you're saying, and those people here who are in your economic-
That's the biggest, I'm a baby boomer. That's the biggest generation in another two years. The biggest generation, Mr. Congressman. We're going to dominate the country.
I know. The law you refer to was part of a compromise that I may not have supported had I been there, and I would like to roll back the tax you're talking about, but I haven't seen the proposal. I haven't seen the cost. Next.
Thank you, Congressman, for being here today. My name is Vincent Archer. I live here in Reseda. Sorry about that. My name is Vincent. I'm here in Reseda, and I'm an administrator for Leon's Transmission. I do the books there. And we take Visa and MasterCard. You were talking about, I appreciate the work you've done with standing up for the bank, against the banks and saving our tax dollars. But they are doing something also with every business that takes Visa and MasterCard. Those interchange fees that they're hitting us with, it's increased from 2001 to today, $48 billion a year. And most people are not aware, consumers are paying that because businesses are passing that on to the consumers. And we had a lawsuit a while back where, well, my question, before I say that, my question is, there's a couple of bills out there, HR 2382, HR 2695, and Mallory Duncan, she's the chief counsel in a lawsuit that's happening now, made a statement before the Finance Committee in October, and I was wondering if you were aware of that and what your thoughts are about it.
Okay, the Finance Committee, that is a committee in the Senate, so obviously, I wasn't there. An issue has arisen on, you know, credit card companies don't just charge us. As a matter of fact, if you're fortunate enough to pay your balance completely every month, they don't get anything from you, and maybe they give you free miles to boot. They get most of their money from the merchant. Now, I would like to see more merchants provide a discount for paying cash, because that's the way to tell the credit card companies where they should put their credit cards.
Right, but with $48 billion a year, they're not going to do that.
Right. Well, if you start offering a discount for cash, people will do that. You'll take the credit card far less often, and you'll give a lot less money to the credit card companies until they wake up and stop charging you 3% and start charging you 2%. The, what I've proposed is the idea that we limit the, well, it's actually an antitrust provision, that we allow for the antitrust rule to go toward pushing these companies toward a lower rate for businesses that employ 500 and fewer people. The reason for that is, I don't think the big-box stores are going to do anything for us just because they're giving the credit card companies less money. I do know that, for those who pay their balances every month, the credit card company is able to give us free service and free miles because those big-box stores and the smaller companies are paying so much. So, I'd like to keep my free miles and give you a lower rate, and the way to do it is an antitrust law provision applicable to companies that employ 500 and fewer people. I have put that forward as a compromise. Unfortunately, those supporting nailing the banks immediately walked away from the table. So, it'll be interesting to see. Right now, my focus is on a better deal for consumers. The other part of this, though, is a better deal for merchants. And until we're able to do something in Washington that will allow your lawyers to sue, and frankly, I would like to see that for companies of your size and even much larger, until then, if companies will start giving discounts for cash, consumers will pay attention. I like my free miles, but I like the discount better.
I understand, but they, I'm sorry. Thank you, Congressman.
Good afternoon, Congressman. Thank you for being here this afternoon. Melissa Gulick from Woodland Hills, California. I was thinking about what Mr. Carmen, Too-
Too Tonnage.
Too Tonnage was talking about with the Convention Center, and that gave a lot of evidence of what his priorities were in terms of the infrastructure that we need to invest in long-term to get us out of bankruptcy. What is your vision for California as a whole in terms of necessary investments that we would need to make in infrastructure that would not reap a short-term gain, but would in fact have a long-term benefit, should we invest? Thank you.
I'm going to address that as a federal nationwide issue, because that's the business I'm in. There is nothing more important than energy efficiency. It is important from a national security standpoint. We haven't had many questions on national security here, but have you noticed that we've got troops in the Middle East, and that's where the oil comes from? Second, it's the most important environmental. Third, it's critically important from an economic standpoint, because when you fill up your tank, you know where that money's going, and it's not going to the U.S. economy. I have supported many efforts to provide funds for better insulation and improvement of our building stock so that it uses less power to keep buildings warm and cool. I have supported alternative energy research so that we can wean ourselves off petroleum. I think I've supported every effort that's actually come to the floor to get us a more efficient, greener energy future. At the same time, windmills are not going to solve our problem next year. It is a slow process, and we're going to have to push it. But if we can just use 5% or 10% less petroleum, the price per barrel doesn't just drop 5% or 10%. It drops a lot more. It's a very tight market. So, anything we can do for fuel efficiency, anything we can do for building efficiency is a step in our environmental future and our economic future. She just did. Next question.
Hi, my name is Kelly Armstrong. I'm a stay-at-home mom. I live in Tarzana. I have a question regarding something that I saw on Fox 11 News, the mayor, and I'm not sure if this is a question you can answer directly or indirectly. But he had this great thing, I thought it was great. It was a Budget Watch program where you can go online and kind of play with the budget, I guess the way you guys have to look at the budget. There were three areas that he said that could not be touched. One was the police, one was his own office, and I think the third was city council. Correct me if I'm wrong. But with the police, I can understand. There are a lot of people out of jobs. The crime rate has gone up, especially in Tarzana, along Ventura. We know that. So, I understand that. But for his office and city council, I mean, honestly, if they had to go through some of the things that we had to go through, they would probably think in other terms, different terms. If they had to shop at some of the places, if they had to bring down maybe their standard of living, wouldn't they kind of see a little bit more of what we're going through and maybe have a better solution for us?
First of all, you're referring to a city website. You raised the question, "This is the second time somebody's wanted to cut Carolina's pay." I assure you, I don't overpay her. She does understand the economic concerns of people in this room. She does not live, you know, her butler only comes four or five times.
But isn't the captain supposed to go down with his ship? Wouldn't he make cuts? I mean, hospitals have done it all throughout the county.
I have, let's put it like this. I didn't design the city's website. I work for the federal government. And I would think, knowing the attitudes of people in the city, maybe he didn't put it up because everybody would have zeroed out those accounts before they went to anything else.
Is it true that we do have the highest-paid city council? I'm not sure, but is that true? And that's my last question.
I don't know. Carmen may still be there. I've got a few people. I will say this. We have probably more constituents per city council member than just about any city. I don't know what the, exactly what they get paid.
$165,000 a year.
What? How much?
$165,000 a year.
Hello, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Brad Sherman. I'm running for city council. Next.
Hello, my name is Buddy Piper. That's my show business name. I created the second-longest-running game show in the world with two other people called Concentration, but in, and I'm here not to get applause, but to have you applaud this thing I wrote on a piece of paper, having based in the valley since 1996, I believe, this man named Sherman here could be president if he learned the information I'm going to leave with him today.
I'm not sure it pays more than city council.
Speaking to millions of people. Just one minute.
But I will, I mean, if there's a president, you know, it does come with a free house, so I'm going to read this carefully if it's going to make me president. Go on.
I wanted to speak here because I speak free to anybody who wants to hear me, one person or 100 people in your home for 10 minutes, 5 minutes, or no time, and you call here because he's going to have my phone number. And I will tell you that one of the things that's going to happen is that we're about to start solving problems by not killing people, but by loving people. And God is love. Don't you listen to any of those people that tell you you're going to burn in hell, because it's a dirty lie? Why would God create somebody to burn in hell? He's got to be stupid, and he's pretty bright. And that's part of the information I will give you.
Thank you. I will point out that when I watch Concentration, they only give you a limit of about time, and then the buzzer came on, so I'm not going to give you another 30 seconds.
I thank you. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for the show.
And I was on the Red Skeleton Show before that, as all the small guys.
We're down to our last three questions. We're already 20 minutes into overtime, and I know that the staff here at Reseda High School wants me to give you quick answers. I probably won't do it, but go ahead.
Congressman Sherman, thank you again for coming out here and seeing us. I appreciate that, because we all want you to hear what we have to say, and hopefully, you can take it back to Washington. What I'd like to talk to you about is, I'm a small business owner. I own a moving company here in Reseda, okay? And there's a thing called the CARB Law, CARB Rule, that's coming out in the next three years, where what we're supposed to do is retool the engines on our trucks, okay? And if you have anything that's under a 2007, you basically have to park it at the side of the road. To retool these engines on the truck, anything over 2007 is about 14 grand, and then five years later, you retool the engine for something like around 20 grand. What's kind of interesting in this, being a local moving company, what happens is, I drive to your house, shut off the engine, load up the truck, start the engine. I'm maybe on the road half an hour each move, especially if it's a local move. For me, it's kind of a hard situation. I've just paid off one truck, and all of a sudden, I'm going to have to come up with like 75 grand to purchase a new one. Or I can lease a truck, or I can go back to renting a truck. I realize that we want to be the Clean Air Situation of the United States. We want to be the show and everything, but right now, with the recession and everything, this is going to kill me and many other small moving companies.
I want to thank you for bringing that to my attention. I did not, you know, I'm not a prime mover on that particular provision. It comes out of the Commerce Committee, and at the same time, it didn't, I heard mostly stories of people at the port who obviously have much longer drives.
They're already underneath supervision.
And whether there should be a different rule for trucks operated less than 100 miles a week, I don't know. But you're the first person to propose it, and I don't know if there's any organization that you're a part of- that you're a part of...
California Moving and Storage Association, we're already trying to lobby against it.
Yeah, that, it makes sense to have a different rule for trucks that are driven a very short, short number of miles each week. Be receptive to that.
Can you tell me who you direct me to, to look into this further, what direction I should, who I should be talking to?
As far as knowing how to push the bill through, your organization probably has somebody in Washington who's pushing it through. If that organization wants to meet with me and my staff, the staff who handles this is Rebecca Corman, and of course, I'm there as well in Washington.
Okay, thank you.
Last question.
Oh, I guess I am. Philip Barron from Northridge.
Yes.
Philip Barron from Northridge, thank you for taking our questions. The debt of the United States of America is approaching, I think, thirteen or fourteen trillion dollars. It's creating a debt-to-GDP ratio not seen since World War II, and I'm gravely concerned that at this debt, we will not be able to sustain our payments to our creditors, and we're gonna, we seem to be increasing spending every year instead of reducing it, and we're passing on a huge burden to ourselves and our children and our grandchildren. And I know that you have children, and I want to know what you, how you are and your office are taking care of this matter. Thank you.
The debt is very high. It is unacceptably high. I will give Obama credit for the fact that he is, the proposal he's put on the table will cut debt as a percent of GDP, which is the right way to mention it, the way you measured it, by half between now and 2013. But frankly, as baby boomers, I know we had another baby boomer, we got a lot of baby boomers up there, one who identified himself as a baby boomer, cheering a whole generation, pointed out, I mean, we're a very large group of people, and the national debt to deal with Social Security, Medicare, and other needs as our generation retires is going to be substantial. The solution that I support is this idea of having a commission. It was supported by probably as many Republicans as Democrats in the Senate until it came up for a vote, and then all the Republicans who supported it, almost all of them, pulled off. I got a quote from Voinovich, I anticipated this question, made up a chart just for you. And, you know, if my party did something like this, I'd be just as upset, but here you have a Republican senator who says that the public perceives the Republican Party as playing games, covering people's hides, and their main goal in life seems to be how many more Republicans we can get into the Senate and the House, and the public interest be damned. That's not me, that's a senior Republican senator from Ohio. And I would say that there are certain things my party does that make me a little angry, I've never been that angry at my own party. We have had compromises, and they aren't perfect, put together through a commission process. One of the things about the commission bill was that if the commission had fourteen out of eighteen members agree on something, then the Senate would actually vote on it. Instead, the commission is not being adopted, the President is creating a different kind of commission with an executive order, and this new kind of commission, they can write a long report, but then the Senate is free to ignore it. And it's, I've never been such a fan of a unicameral legislature. The Senate is very frustrating, it's tied up into knots. So, without this commission approach, I don't think we're going to see the major difficult, painful, non-political decisions being made that are necessary to get us on the road to paying off our deficit. I will say this, I was on the Budget Committee in 1997, we adopted a budget to create a surplus. By the year 2000, we had a projection of many trillions of dollars of surplus if we'd stayed on the same road, and I had Alan Greenspan come and testify before our Financial Services Committee that one of the things he was worried about, I know we've got some people in the entertainment business here, some involved in humor, Greenspan testified that he was worried that we would pay off the entire national debt, and that that would be a problem, because then we'd have extra money and we might invest it, and then the government would be picking private sector investments.
What did you ask him? Did you ask him?
Needless to say, I did not think, I know something about Washington, I did not think that we had a risk of paying off the entire national debt. If it happens, I would regard that as a high-class problem. And, but in 1999, 2000, we were on the road to, at least in Greenspan's view, paying off the entire national debt. We are now on the road toward accumulating so much debt that people won't be willing to buy it. As to whether the United States would default, such as Greece might do, I don't think it will, but other countries have. Our debt, thank God, is denominated in our money. So when Greece runs out of money, they can't print more, they're not allowed to print euros, it's not their currency, it's a currency of many countries. When Thailand got into trouble, they owed dollars, and they're not allowed to pay, to print dollars. We are allowed to print dollars, we are not going to default on our debt, we have ink, we have paper, we will deliver dollars that are required. But whether we are able to maintain the dollar as a currency that people find valuable, that other countries want to invest in, we should not be fooled by the euros' problems today. Right now, they got a big problem, we bail out companies, they bail out countries, so they do have a problem. But that should not disguise the fact that we've got a problem, and that is this enormous debt, and the fact that we...
Not spending.
And I look forward, I want, yeah, folks, I think we're pretty much at the end. We've gone half an hour over. I want to thank people for the courtesy, for the good order. I know people have very strong views, some of you very much wanted to ask a question, we couldn't get to everybody. Thank you for being here, and thank you for giving me more good ideas to take to Washington than I could have had if I spent a day at various hearings listening to self-anointed experts. Thank you very much.